All right. So, once again, welcome to the Central School District Board Meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications, Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card and turn it in to the Board Secretary or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. It's one of these yellow cards that are over there on the table. Speakers' comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved process as outlined in Board Policy KAL. This form may be found on our website or by calling the District Office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review and issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communications, and if so, what avenues preferred. Thank you for your attendance at this meeting of the Central School Board. And with that, we're down to the adoption of the agenda, and that's on to you.
Yep, there are no changes.
Okay. So, Communications, optional, student reports. So, do we have somebody here from Power Peers? There she is.
Hello.
[inaudible]
So, for our last month and the rest of this month, it's almost over. Last month, we got the opportunity to go to a camp and plan our future Power Peer lessons, like the videos that we show. I think we had our new Power Peers advisor, because we are getting a new one next year. He attended, along with Ms. Larson and Ms. Thu, and a group of Power Peer students who are currently in Power Peers and also some new ones for next year. That way, we all kind of get along and meet each other, and I think it was really helpful that we were able to plan our videos beforehand. We came up with some pretty good ideas. We also had our respect video. I wish we would have been able to show it, but it's a little short. So, that was planned, and the focus of that was respect, and we focused on the BLS students and how we could show them respect. And Moshe Martinez directed that one, as he usually does. And then, finishing off the year, we did our senior farewell assembly, where we put together a little goodbye to all the seniors, and we made a slideshow, and the staff had a little skit, and they made themselves the slideshow as well of their past high school pictures, which was really nice. And that's about all we have going on. We're currently switching pantry clothes to summer clothes, available to the students until the end of the year, and that's about all we have going on. Although Ms. Thu couldn't make it, I wanted to thank her so much for everything that she's done for Power Peers, and she's really going to be missed. Thank you so much, yes.
Thank you. And so, do we have somebody from ASBAC?
I don't see anybody.
Going, what's going twice? Okay, Communications from the floor. So, Shannon Ball, you want to come up and have a seat?
Good evening. My name is Shannon Ball. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you today. I am here as a resident of Independence for almost 15 years and have two children at Monmouth Elementary School, a second grader and a fifth grader. I'm here today to discuss outdoor school. With my oldest child being in fifth grade, I thought they would attend outdoor school this year or next year. It has come to my attention that Central School District does not participate in outdoor school, and I'm here to ask the School Board if they could explain why. Outdoor school was created in 1957 to allow students in fifth and sixth grade to learn, immersed in nature away from a classroom setting. On November 8th, 2016, Oregon voters passed ballot measure 99. Then, Senate Bill 5524 during the 2017 legislation provided the funding for outdoor school, $24 million for the July 17-19 biennium. This is a voluntary program. All school districts have the opportunity to access the funds but are not required to participate. Oregon State University is the funding administrator and support schools in preparing and implementing the outdoor school programs. According to OSU 1718 Outdoor School Annual Report, the 1718 academic year, 128 of 197 school districts in Oregon received funding during the 1819 application of the cycle that just ended, 146 of the 197, so 75 percent of the schools, districts applied. Central was not one of those. The biennial allocation was $24 million. The district funding allocation for the 1718 school year was $8.925 million. Now, the sad part. The actual district spending for fiscal year 1718 was $7.177 million, leaving $1.748 million on the table unspent. OSU's goal is to continue to fully fund all district outdoor school award requests. I have a table in my presentation that I will present to you guys later, but it shows all the school districts around the area that are participating in outdoor school, Fall City, Lacriole, Lucky Mew, and Perry Dale. The current sophomore class at Central High School is the last class to attend outdoor school at the Central School District, as over five years at Central School District has not been participating in outdoor school program. For many children, outdoor school is the very first or only experience, being away from home, hiking in a forest, getting their feet wet in a stream, exploring sea life along the sandy beaches, camping, learning table manners, singing campfire songs, and most importantly, getting them unplugged from their phones, tablets, and gaming systems. It is not only experienced for fifth and sixth graders, it is also experienced for high school students to be counselors, mentors, and leaders to the younger kids in our community. I grew up in Tillamook, Oregon, and participated in outdoor school at Camp Meriwether as a sixth grader, and went back as a counselor in high school and had everlasting memories. I can still remember some of the campfire songs and the head counselor, Mr. Bones. My mentee would see me in a small town and come talk to me, and is someone they looked up to. I believe outdoor school is a positive experience, has been voted on and paid for by the legislators and taxpayers, and should be included in the Central School District program. I encourage you to bring outdoor school back to Central School District. It is too late for the next school year, as the application was due May 15th, 2019, but be prepared and bring it back to Central School District in the 2021 school year, as I urge you to not leave state funds on the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hannah.
Adrian needs a copy. Yeah, so you'll make that available to all of them, right?
Okay, Laura, I see you back there. Our CEA rep tonight, President Laura Waite.
Hey, everyone. Good to see you. I don't have another representative here tonight. I haven't sent somebody up from another school, because I wanted to tell you myself that this is my last School Board meeting as CEA president. We ran an election recently, and Adrian Galt of Talmadge Middle School won that election. I chose not to run this time. I'm actually going back to school, and so I'm taking a little something off my plate, just a little something. And I wanted to let you know personally that I have enjoyed working with all of you, that I've appreciated your respect, that you give the teachers of our membership, that you give the CEA and the partnership that we forged together over the years. And I know that with Adrian's leadership that those partnerships will be continued. She'll be sending folks next year, and so I hope that she'll be able to count on your support as much as I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, you've still got two minutes.
Things are going great at the schools.
Our other president of the OSEA, Denise Chase. And her friend.
First, I'd like to say Laura just stole my speech.
Yeah.
Tonight is also my last School Board presentation as president, and I'll just ditto all the other things that she said. But also, I wanted to introduce to you the incoming president. Carol Stewart will take over as president at the end of June, so you will be seeing her a lot. So, I look forward to seeing where things go with her leadership. But also, I wanted to take an opportunity to just acknowledge eight people in our district who are retiring this year. Those eight classified employees have contributed a total of 214 years to Central School District and to the service of students. Angia Gary has worked for the district for 18-plus years. Tina Crowder for 19. Rosa Lombrares for 23. Liz Dungy for 25. Becky McMillan, before she retired, had put in 30 years. Annabelle Rincon, 30 years. Dave Dodson, before he retired last week, put in 31. And Janice Vilwalk, the big winner, has put in 38 years at Central School District. And I think all of these folks are a great representation of the dedication that classified employees have for the service of our students. And I wish them all well. We will miss them, and we will just be a tiny bit jealous until it's our turn. So, that is all I have for this evening, and thank you very much. I have enjoyed working with all of you, although I'm not going anywhere. And she keeps mentioning ball and chain or something. I don't know. We'll see. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Denise.
No. Thank you, and in your packet this evening, we have a couple of pieces to the financial The first is our, sorry, just bring it up there, make sure you've got the right thing before I start talking about it. The first is actually the appropriations report through April 30th, and as you can see, that includes the original appropriations plus adjustments to the budget that have been made through resolution or through transfers to date. As of that point, things were looking good. Later on in the agenda, we'll talk about a little, some adjustments we need to make because of the May activity and anticipated June activity, so I will be speaking to you a little bit more later on about that. Any questions about the appropriations report? Then I will draw your attention now to our maintenance and capital projects, and I'll also give a farewell. As you notice in my remarks there, I mentioned Dave Dodson. Dave has retired, has had his last day with us after that aforementioned 31 years. During that time, Dave working in our maintenance department has kept us running, started up new equipment, kept old stuff from, kept it limping along. He has closed schools, he's opened a school, he's remodeled a big school, he knows where all the skeletons are buried in the district, where all the things are put together with duct tape and baling wire. And it's a big transition, but we wish Dave well in his retirement. I was trying to figure out a way to trick him here tonight, so you could all thank him for his work, but that would not happen. So, instead, I would like to introduce to you Brian Weatherly. Brian is our new Facility Services Manager, and so, Brian, if you could come up and tell the Board a little bit about yourself and...
Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. As Cease said, my name is Brian Weatherly. I came over here in April, April 8th, I think, was my first day, from Salem Kaiser, where I did 32 years with our custodial department. I left there as a field coordinator, which is basically supervising custodians, working very closely with maintenance folks, been really involved in a lot of our bond stuff that we did previously that just wrapped up, and was fortunate enough to get this gig, and I'm super excited to be here, and I know I've got some big shoes to fill with Dave, but hopefully, we're going to make a pretty smooth transition. I think things have been going pretty smooth so far. We've done some good things just in the last few weeks. I see a lot of stuff that needs some improvement. I see a lot of things that are going very, very well, but hopefully, we'll be able to build on the things that are going well and improve the things that need improvement. So, I look forward to working with all of you in the coming years. I've given my commitment to be here until I retire, which I will, I will. This will be my farewell, and I want to leave it, you know, someplace to build on. So, that's my commitment. Looking forward into the summer, fortunately, we don't have a whole lot of projects that we need to work on. There were a couple of things that jumped out to me immediately when I signed on, as I was touring the schools, and one of them was the floor at Independence. I was very disheartened with that, I think is a good way of putting things. So, I'm looking at having that redone this summer at a cost of $20,000-ish. I'd like to do some nice things there and make it a little more appealing as students come in and make it a little more nice for staff and the public to see, have a nice place as they come in. That's one of the schools that I'd really like to work on, just doing an overall, some overall improvements with what funds we have as we can do it, and then in-house stuff. We've kind of put on hold the work at Ash Creek. I haven't had a real good opportunity to look at the flooring in there, and I really don't see a need of spending that kind of money on something that we may end up needing to change in a couple of years anyway. So, I've talked to Cease, and we've just decided to kind of put a hold on the two items that are there, the intercom system and the flooring. I don't know much about either one of those yet, so until I get some in-depth information on it, we're going to hold on that. The HVAC at IES for the cafeteria in room 10, we dove into that pretty good. We got three quotes back. We're still looking at those and evaluating those. Those come in at $25,000-ish. We have some leaky windows at MES that we'd like to look at getting repaired. That's going to be some grinding of some concrete and, you know, some hydraulic cement or whatever that we need to put up and probably repaint job on a wall, $2,500-ish. The south gym wall at Talmadge Middle School, it's got some water intrusion. Don't know a whole lot about it. I know that when the wind blows and the water hits it, with the stucco finish on it, it can kind of seep through some of the cracks, so we're going to dive into that and see what we can do with that. If we can put a paint, you know, a heavy elastomeric paint on it, then we'll go with that. If it's something that we think needs a little more attention, then we're going to look at that. The bleachers at Talmadge was another biggie for me. I saw those, and I remember that those are some of the bleachers that I think that we had similar to that at one of the high schools I worked at when I was at Salem Kaiser, that were very, they're, I'm not going to say hazardous, but on the verge. I know that the boards get dry and brittle. We've had people fall through them. We've had injuries pulling the bleachers out, putting the bleachers in. So, I really wanted, I pushed Cease hard for this one to get the bleachers looked at. That came back at about $65,000. When I talked with the vendor about that, he agreed that if we waited until fall or even winter break, it'll be substantially cheaper. So, I think we've kind of held off on that until later in the year, and we'll look at getting that taken care of. There's a couple other little things that we're looking at, the hot water. There's kind of a silly setup that they did. They put a hub in the middle of the office area where there's a water heater, and we can't get the water heater out. So, before it becomes a problem, we want to get in and see about rerouting some hot water so that we can avoid any problems. And the reason that's so expensive is because we'll probably have to have a circulating pump in there. Because of where that water heater is and what it feeds, it'll take too long to get hot water to the rest of the building. So, we need to put a circulating pump of some sort in there. At the high school, we have a biggie, the $48,000 for the roof. That's primarily the entire roof. It's a really good chunk of it. That'll be recoded, they'll go in, they'll clean it, they'll wash it, they'll take all the drains, make sure everything's working right, and I think that'll take care of the majority of any kind of leakage that we have. The rest of the roof is in really good shape. We did a survey of it a couple of years ago, and the survey all came back. This will address all of the big issues on that moisture.
This is part two of what we did last year.
Yeah.
So, last year, remember, instead of the million-dollar fix, and we broke up the hundred thousand dollar fix into a couple of pieces, so this is part two.
And this should substantially take care of the roof. Couple little things. I'm going to jump down to the greenhouse. We're on hold with that. We're kind of waiting for the teacher to decide how she wants to go about getting it set up. We don't have any kids, shortly, we won't have any kids to help us get the plastic strung and run over the top of it. At that point is when we'd need to get in the plumber for the gas and the water, and then the electrician. And that's kind of all we're waiting on, on that. That's not a big deal, but it's out there still. Go up to the service of backstop, the basketball backstops. One of the things that I had asked about when I came over here, I had heard there was an issue with the high school bleachers, of them coming in and out, and I didn't understand why. So, in digging into that, I was told that they haven't been serviced in a number of years, so that was a key thing for me. I had a vendor come out and look at it and give us a quote on servicing, and it also happens that he gave me some literature on it. It is now code to have those serviced annually. So, if you'll notice at the bottom where it says annual periodic maintenance, it says service for bleachers at Ash Creek and for CHS. So, we're going to be including that in our annual maintenance stuff, and that'll be part of the PM that I want to implement for taking care of all the maintenance, so we don't have these kind of problems. One of the key issues that the service tech, when he was under, looking at, there'd been a couple of plates that had actually ripped away from the motor mounts, which are causing the bleachers to walk in and out, kind of funny, and they shouldn't be. They should be just rolling out nice and easy, nice and smooth. This company will come out, and they will adjust, check all the bolts and make sure everything's tight, they'll grease, they'll make sure everything's at the proper levels and everything interlocks correctly for safety reasons. So, that also goes to the backstops. Backstops are not a code yet. Yet, the backboards, when they go up and down, there's cable on there. Well, there's also a safety strap, that's kind of a spring-loaded safety strap, so that if that cable should break or there happens to be a problem, that it'll kind of stop it, it'll arrest it on its way down, so it doesn't slam down and maybe hurt somebody. Chances are, it's not going to hurt anybody, but this is a safety issue for it. Since it's not code and it's never been done, we want to have them done. We actually have one of the coils at the high school that broke and needs to be replaced, so that's going to be something that we take care of this summer as well. And, you know, hopefully, we'll get that into the system too, where we're doing that every couple of years, at least getting them looked at and tested to make sure everything's fine. Those are the biggies. The modular is set to go in here on the first. We'll get that hooked up. We should be up and running shortly after that for its use. Playground barchip's another one, that's just kind of a rolling annual periodic thing that we do. The custodians go out, and they spread the barchips from underneath the areas that they get kicked, but it's still, these things decay and they rot down, and so we have to go in and have new chips spread out and brought into all of the playgrounds and whatnot. So, yeah, that's kind of where we're at. Any questions?
We'll keep them busier next year with that capital budget.
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll approve at the end of the month.
Hopefully. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just have a few items, and I know one that we'll touch on, but just a reminder that we are doing an additional budget hearing and board meeting, which will be held after our retreat, so just that reminder. And again, we want to make sure that will be after our retreat, so the budget hearing will be at 6:00, followed by a board meeting at 6:30. The 24th, Monday, the 24th. Celebrations have begun, so last Thursday, it is just going to be a fun-filled week. It already has been. Last Thursday was our first graduations with our Student Services Transition Program Aging Out Ceremony. We had four students that aged out and one that earned his modified diploma, so that was excited at the auditorium last Thursday. Many, many people know this already, but I'm going to publicly state it at our board meeting, that on Saturday, our Central Boys Baseball Team won the 5A OSA state title by beating Pendleton 11 to 4. It was a very exciting game. This was the first state championship for our baseball program since 1958, so we're really excited, and I just want to, please join me in congratulating all of our student athletes and coaches. They worked really hard. They have not lost a game since the middle of April, so really ended the year strong. And then, lastly, our celebrations at the high school will continue this week, beginning tonight, right now, as we are going, or shortly in here, they're going to begin the Panther Athletic Awards, followed by Senior Awards Night, which is Wednesday, and that will be at 6:30 on Wednesday in the auditorium. And then, finally, our graduation on Friday, June 7th, at 7:00 PM at Panther Stadium. So, again, just a fun-filled week, one of my favorite weeks of the year to get to celebrate. On Thursday, also Thursday morning, is when we do the parade of our graduates through all of the elementary school, so that's throughout the morning on Thursday as well. So, a fun-filled week ahead. That is it.
All right. So, as far as a board report, she already mentioned graduation. We have a board retreat here on the 24th at 1:00. Don't forget to look at what she sent you about what you want to eat that day, and don't forget that our next board meeting is July 1st, so it'll be before the 4th of July. And do not forget, if you're interested, the OSBA conference in July is in Bend, again, I believe.
Yes.
And that brings us down to the consent agenda.
Before we leave activities, at one point in time, you talked about trying to do something board-building-wise at the OSBA summer SNL. Was I agreeing?
Us together, or?
Yeah, just as a group.
Yeah, so we will, whoever is a part of the OSBA retreat in July going over to Bend, we will also, I'm in the process of reaching out to them to do some additional work at our August retreat, so we will do some of that in August as well.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I thought we were going to do something at the OSBA convention.
No, no.
That's just a regular?
Yes, just our regular OSBA conference that we have each year.
Okay.
Again, I know there's a majority of the, from what I have been, it's been shared with me, the board going, so that will give us some time to be able to do some work. That is an opportunity for us where we can be in the setting and be able to have conversation in regards to the future. About one of the only times outside of our board meetings that we're allowed to do that during the school year, so I look forward to that opportunity with all of you.
So, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
What are we consenting to?
Second. No, no, no. She can't.
Moved.
I thought he made a motion.
No, I just said, what are we consenting to? I hadn't looked.
So, this is the April minutes, as well as we have three policies of second review. There were minor changes.
And the personnel recommendations.
Yep, and then we do have some new personnel.
Yep.
I make a motion and we approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Peggy and seconded by Jerry. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. And...
Calendar.
Where does that bring us to?
Board calendar. The board calendar?
Board calendar.
So, you will see in your, either in your packet or on the link, the 2019-20, although I see that there is a typo right there. We will fix that. Board of Director calendar. A couple of things just to identify, that we are having the first Monday, it worked out this year in the calendar, so it will be the first Monday of every month for the year. As we have done in the past...
Except September.
September, yes, there is one because of the holiday. Thank you for that. The other, as we have done in the past, we will, every other month, either do a retreat or a PLC. The only caveat to that is in February, March, those become busy months, and so you will see back-to-back PLCs, both on the 24th of February and then again on March 16th. As you go into April, you will also see, as we normally do, our budget hearings. We may need to, we shouldn't have to make an adjustment to the June meeting, because obviously, we're going to be in... we're going to be in the middle of the biennium, so that, that final budget committee meeting and then approval will be on the June 1st, although we may shift that to the 22nd when we do the retreat. So again, I think some of that is, we're, we'll be looking for that flexibility and would come back to you if we need to make those changes. I think the other piece that is not on here, and this will be part of also the beginning conversations at our, not only our June Retreat, but in our August Retreat, is to start talking about a facility committee. As many of you, as I've shared, many of, with many of you, there is an interest in just where are we going and the potential of the bond in the future. So I do think it's time that we put a facility committee together, and that will be a mix of not only the board, but representatives from the community, as well as families, and potentially, I would say, students and staff. So we will begin to talk through that. That would be additions to the, to the board calendar as we go into next year. So that will be what we continue to talk about, and then we'll bring the board, excuse me, then we would bring the Board of Directors' calendar back when we add those dates in throughout the school year. So questions, any questions about the board calendar? If not, I would, if I could have a motion.
Motion to accept the calendar?
Do we actually have to accept this?
You do.
All move, we accept it then.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
It's been moved by and seconded, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your right hand. Last meeting. Okay, so 6.2, procurement of college and career information software.
Thank you. As per my explanation there, we've been looking at some new college and career software to be able to use, partially because our reporting requirements under Measure 98 will expect us to be a little bit more robust on tracking those things, both pathways and graduation on track, but also where, where students end up. And our current system is kind of limited in that. It is a service that we get through the University of Oregon. So we did some research, Teaching and Learning did some research on other systems that might be more robust, and kind of kept coming back to this one. In the attachment there, it not only has the sole source justification for this one software, but included in that is a table, and it shows you the features of the system that they looked at versus other system options. There's just not, this, this is a ripe area. If somebody's a developer, I suggest you jump into this kind of software, because there aren't a whole lot of options out there, and this Naviance company has taken all of the kudos, all of the awards. So under our board policy, because this is a five-year commitment, although we do have the opportunity of funding those away ever from Measure 98 to get out of that contract, but because it is a major commitment, we did want to look at a procurement. We were unable to conduct a, an RFP under the normal circumstances that we would for this kind of software commitment, so I am recommending that we go to a sole source procurement and select Naviance, and would need your okay to do that. We had originally planned potentially to put this into next year's budget to start, but partially because we have to make some purchases this fiscal year, which we'll talk about here in a second, and partially to give our team a jump on getting the software implemented. This would be effective to try and get this contract signed and started by June 30th.
And again, just for reference, this is the contract that I asked you to approve, so this is the next step of the procurement, as we talked about at our last meeting.
Yep.
Do we know, when we talked about it last time, we, I noted that Portland has used this. Do we know how long they've used it, or do we have any, does anybody have a track record?
I'm going to look at Principal Servigna for a minute in regards to Naviance and how many other school districts that you're aware have been using it for several years. Do you come from a school district that had used it? If you want to share a little bit for us, please. I'm bringing up the expert.
So I haven't done any research on exactly how many across the state use Naviance, where the two districts that I worked in, Westland, Wilsonville, and Hillsborough both use Naviance, and I know that Woodburn does. There are several school districts across the state. I haven't done a lot of research to be able to list them all for you, but several components that we're looking at, especially using it to document our PLP process for students, so that's online, and then it helps us with being able to pull reports and see where students are in their progress, rather than that being a paper trail.
And PLP is Personal Learning Plans.
It counts for their .25 career credit that they get for completing the state requirements.
I was trying to get some kind of, do you know how long the software's been around and in use? Is it like a year, five years, 10 years?
Oh, no, it's been between five and 10 years, because I, it came onboard at Westland, Wilsonville at least eight years ago.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve sole source procurement of Naviance software.
Second.
Do we hear, did you second it? And seconded by Jerry? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. And so, now we're down to designated auditors, insurance agents, and attorneys.
I move, we adopt the operating resolution, selecting auditors, insurance carriers, insurance brokers, and attorneys as presented.
Do we have a second? Moved and seconded?
You're supposed to ask for discussion, but if anybody has any, I'll argue with them.
Actually, I do have one question. Sorry. So are, these are all the same as, we didn't go out for?
We have not. We will be looking at that for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And now we're down to the district calendar.
So just as we have last year, we have had a committee of representatives from each of the five schools, as well as both union associations, that have this spring worked through the school calendar. You'll see it's a new format. One of the things that was requested from the previous layout was to make the calendar clearer by month, and so this is our first effort at doing that. I'm going to give kudos to Mr. LaBounty, because he or someone that is in his building helped develop this as we move forward from the school, for the school year in 1920. What's great is a majority of the calendar is very similar to last year. We are trying to build a consistent calendar. The committee, each year, we meet three times, really focusing on what went well with the, with the calendar, where there might need to be improvements, and at times, really good, I would say, compromise amongst our team moving forward. I think one of the areas that we will continue and still have, and will continue to have conversations is tied to conferences. Part of that is, we want to meet the needs of our staff and students, but we also want to meet the needs of our families, and so really, this year you'll see, as we did last year in November, we have two full days of conferences. Really, the elementaries need two full days in the fall, early fall, to meet with parents. We have made a slight shift to the spring. Last year it was the week, or the two days going into spring break, we, that was not seen highly upon, so we have, there was asked for a shift to move it into an after-spring break, so you'll see it in the middle of April. So that is one of the, the changes we've made. You'll also see we've identified both workdays and then professional development, so where it's listed PD, those are professional development days, that we'll continue to, again, get input from both unions, as well as district administration, on our focus as we continue in the 1920 school year. So we'll, we'll continue to talk through those pieces. You'll see, as identified in the, the contract with the Central Education Association, we do have four grade days, and then there are two additional days documented as either a professional development or potentially PLC progress report. That is going to be, as I've said, because it's very important to me that, that the buildings' leadership with their staff make those decisions, and so, again, that collaborative approach, working for what's best for the building, could be a combination of that. So you could see a half-day PLC, half-day PD, half-day progress report day, you could see a full progress report day. And again, it's up to the building leadership, administration, as well as their staff, to make those decisions on those two days moving forward. So with that, if you have any other questions, those are the, those are the changes that we made for this year. But again, starting to be a more consistent calendar.
Everybody's generally happy with it?
Yes, again, both, again, we, after with the committee meets, we do send it to both associations and have received feedback from both moving forward.
It's really nice to read. It looks good.
And the goal is, if we can get to a consistent calendar, that, you know, potentially in the future, we can do a draft of the next year, and so we'll start to have that conversation now that we have, are starting to get a pretty solid calendar. This is pretty consistent to what last year was, excluding that change in the spring And I do need approval of this.
Any other questions?
No, there's no makeup days, June 15th to 17th?
Yes.
Which is about a week after the last day of school. There's several days there after the 9th, when there's no school for the kids, and yet the makeup days come on 15th to 17th. Is that gonna?
Oh, hold on, let me go.
Is that gonna go over like a pregnant pole vaulted with the community?
No, no, let me, hold on, I have the wrong one.
I was assuming they were placeholders to be moved.
They are, again, like we did last year, they become placeholders, and so really, it's, if we are in that position, we would swap. So where you see listed the 10th semester grade day, the 11th and 12th is the workdays, really they would swap, and then those, the, if we do have any snow days, then those three days would actually move to the 15th, 16th, and 17th. So again, they're just placeholders to give us flexibility. Like I said, I hope we don't have to. We had to call two this year, but again, the goal is, hopefully we don't have to do that, but they are built in just to be safe.
And it's a good question, Jerry. I think that might be confusing to folks, we'll have to make that clear, that we wouldn't expect the kids to be done the 9th and come back the following Monday.
Yeah, there's room in that little box at the bottom to put notes like that.
Yep, we'll make a note of that.
I move, we accept the Central 13J Calendar for 2019-20 as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the calendar. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And, so are we back to CEES, or are we back to you?
Nope, I'll take this one too.
It's a lot of, lot of CEES right now.
Lucky, all of you. Yeah, it's my time of year.
It's budget time.
So in reviewing the budget, as I said, we have had a couple of factors that have, that have come to my attention. As you saw at the end of the April report, we had plenty of appropriations in our special revenue funds for all the activities that we'd had up to this point, and we have still some encumbrances that, you know, are fluid. But it also came to my attention that the budget for the High School Success Act was not firmed up at budget time last year, and we've been making adjustments throughout the year, and I, I realized that we would need to, we would have more to spend. We didn't think much of it, because we typically get some grace period to spend and carry over those funds and be able to spend them out in a future year. But because this is a new program, and it is on a state fiscal year instead of a federal fiscal year, the state is kind of not making things up as they go. They, they are also in, this is also very fluid for them. So we have recently received notice that we can either spend by June 30th, or we can go through a kind of an extensive extension process to potentially be able to carry funds over. And we, we are looking at that, but I, you don't, I don't want to, I want to be able to spend the funds if we have to, and we don't have them fully appropriated at this point.
I, I think it's important to note that, as he says, we have just received last week this information in regards to the ability to extend or not. And so, as he says, because this is, High School Success is, this is the first biennium that we have been through, as we are, I think Oregon Department of Education is trying to put things in order, and so again, we didn't know, we were waiting for advice on if we were going to be able to carry over or not. We finally received notification that it was a no, and then I think that there has been great pushback from school districts, and then we received another email saying that there is a slight extension of spending, and I mean that slight.
Through August?
No, through Ju, through the end of June. They were.
Well, if you had the extension, how far would that?
They were originally.
June 15th.
Yes.
And then they extended it through June 30th, and you can get an extension, not into July, but not a lot of extension.
Really?
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, so again, I want to be clear that we are doing our best to be able to follow the guidance of Oregon Department of Ed, spend the money fiscally responsibly. So again, I just, I think it's important to note that, that as we bring new programs on, not always are things clear to us from the guidance we receive from the Oregon Department of Education. So again, they're a good partner, but again, this is really the first two years of this cycle with the High School Success, and I believe we'll continue to see some changes with this next biennium as well, and then the following year when it is actually fully funded.
And as I mentioned in the narrative about this, these are planned expenditures anyway. It's not like we had to go out and go, oh, what do we do, what do we do? We have planned the expenditures, we just plan to be able to time them out a little better for next year's budgeting. Now we're in a position to ask you to, once again, change this year's budget.
So does this, so basically, we've got $375,000 we didn't have before, we need to spend it by the end of June. We think we can do that responsibly. I think we should do everything to make sure it looks really responsible too, because this is a classic case of, you have to spend this money fast or it'll go away, and then people see stupid things getting purchased and.
And that's what I say, these are exactly, these were in the spending plan all along. We just thought the spending plan would be elongated a bit. It's, it's exactly the plan they had, had all throughout the year, because we, we had word of the funds, we just didn't have word of the spending timeline.
So does this have any impact on next year's budget? Is any of this money that we had budgeted to spend next year?
No, we didn't, we haven't yet at this point. We, we get another full dose, and if the student improvement account, if the high, if the Student Success Act is successfully implemented, we'll actually get more, because that includes full Measure 98 funding, so.
But we're being told that that won't happen until the second year of the biennium. So we believe, right now, and I'm looking at Dr. Vickery, just that our similar funding will happen as this year and last year for the 1920, and then for the 2021 is when it would be fully funded.
So would you plan to pay the whole nuance?
Naviance?
Naviance, I'm sorry.
No, we'll just be paying the first year.
Just the first year?
We'd just be paying it this year instead of next, for example. Gets that contract signed and going and gives them. Gets that contract signed and going and gives them a little head start.
How big a team are we sending for Avid?
How big a team?
Oh, goodness.
Sending big?
There's a couple of different groups that are going. And Dr. Vickery just shared with me, we are close to almost spending the, all of the money. She has a few last items, but to some degree, based off of her budget, we have a little bit of money left once you appropriate it, because we have been moving forward and with our spending of what is necessary for both at the high school and at the 15% that we can use at the middle school.
For Avid?
We, yes, the 15, the Avid is the focus at the middle school, where we spend the money for the High School Success.
And then, as a reminder, we talked about during the budget process, that we're looking at taking some of the fixed Avid costs and trying to move those into the general fund for sustainability, so this Measure 98 money can actually, we can continue to grow CTE programming, hiring a new coordinator, and things like that. So, we're actually trying to, trying to plan even further ahead as to how to manage these funds, but.
How many going to Avid?
18 for college.
Good.
And high school has.
I want to say.
18.
Full teams going. We're getting to that peak point. The way Avid works, you ramp up, 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 get everyone trained, and then it's, you start to get to ratchet back a little bit.
It takes a while to get there.
Yes.
So, do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt the supplemental budget resolution in the amount of $375,000 in the special revenue funds as presented.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Christina. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And we are now down to comments by individual board members. Anything? Go, Jerry.
I'd just like to say something about the video we saw last month, because I don't think anybody mentioned it, but that was really a powerful thing, and well-thought-out and well-put-together. It was, whoever put that together was right on.
And I think tonight, when she mentioned the video they'd done this month in respect, and she mentioned that it was focused on the BLS students, so I'm not sure if you all realize, that's our basic life skills students. Those are our most intensive, high-need students. And so, having the high school recognize that particular group and how to treat them with respect, I think is a really great thing. I'm going to look for the video and watch it.
Yeah, and I'll put that into the Friday report.
Where can we find the videos? Because I've looked for them before.
I think they're on YouTube, aren't they?
Find them.
Yes, we, yes.
The YouTube channel for Power Peers?
Yes. If you just go into the, if you go into YouTube and put it, type in Power Peers, it'll show up. We're also in the midst of a revamp of our website, so some of that stuff will go on to the websites as we move forward.
Any other comments?
And I think we'll be able to give you information about the outdoor school program that Shannon talked about, so you will be able to respond to her as well as yourselves and know kind of where we are on that, because that is something we have worked on. And as far as the statewide money she mentioned from Measure 98, 99, so we'll update.
Okay.
So, I just want to comment, I got to go to the ballgame on Saturday. It was really an amazing time.
Or the baseball game.
Huh?
Baseball.
Yeah, the baseball game. Wasn't the Beavs. So, it was the Central Panthers taking, taking the lead and hanging on. So, it was a really good time. Everybody had a good time, and it was an amazing event. So, I want to thank the teachers for everything that they do all the time. And with that, we are going to take about a five-minute recess, because we're going to go into executive session under the provisions of ORS 192660, open meeting law. Board of Directors will enter executive session for the following purpose, to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations under ORS 192662, Section D, and to review and evaluate the performance of the superintendent or any other public officer, employee, or staff member, unless that person requests an open hearing, ORS 192662, Section I. Specific information discussed in the executive session shall not be made public and shall remain undisclosed. I don't believe we plan on coming back and making any decisions. With that, we are in recess for five minutes. And thank you for your attendance tonight.